Our special meeting back in session. And welcome our next candidate, Jane Fias Desessa. Is that close?
It's perfect, actually. That's the way to pronounce it.
I've been practicing.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
On behalf of the City Council, welcome. Thank you for being here. Just a couple of housekeeping items. We've allotted one hour for the interview. And each council member is going to ask one question as we go around the table. And then there'll be a second question from each council member. And then I'll ask the final question at the end. Okay? So if you're ready, we'll get started.
I'm ready.
Okay.
Did you want to help me at the opportunity at the end also to ask your own question?
Yeah. At the end, we'll give you an opportunity to ask questions if you want to or make a statement at the end also. Okay? So, please tell us about yourself and then explain your reasons for wanting to be the next Troy City Manager.
Oh, my goodness. You know, I am one of the lucky ones, or at least I consider myself to be one of the lucky ones. I've had a long, long career in public administration. The minute I graduated from university, I went straight to local government. So I've had the privilege of working for many, many diverse communities, a total of seven. I've worked in communities that have dealt with challenging issues. I think I have experience in working in just about every single aspect that relates to the operations of local government. I have helped to build things such as international airports, to roads, to doing union contracts, economic development, budgeting. I think budgeting is my forte because that's where I believe I excel the most in the field of budget. When I worked in one of the largest cities in the United States, in San Antonio, I was an analyst, a budget analyst, and we prepared budgets that totaled over millions of dollars. So I'm very, very familiar in preparing budgets. So I think that overall, I have lots to offer the city of Troy. It is a tremendous community. I will tell you, that is not the first time that I've applied for this position, but I'm determined. I am determined. It's a great city. I can see in my work where the city of Troy has been one of the leaders in our community in this area. You've done an amazing job. It is a progressive community. And when you ask me, why am I here? Working with the current city that I'm at, the city of Pontiac, it is a strong mayor form of government. And I am, well, my background is in city government. And so the only reason that I'm looking to make this change is because of the type of government. I'd like to go back to the council manager form of government. As a certified city manager, it is, I walk this thin line of not getting too involved with the political issues. Whereas in Pontiac, the deputy mayor, and that's an unusual title that not a lot of administrators have, where you can actually say that when the mayor leaves office, then I get to be mayor. Or if for some reason, the mayor will be gone for an extended period of time, then I get to be the mayor. So as a city administrator, I can tell you that not many city managers can put that on their resume, to say that they can actually be the mayor of a community. So I think that's good. So the only reason that I'm looking to make this change is to go back to my roots, go back to working under the council manager form of government. The city of Pontiac, I can tell you that it's an amazing community. We're doing lots and lots of new things to help our city grow. And I can go on and on and on in terms of some of the projects that I'm doing. But I'm hoping that as we go through the questions, I can answer some of them. So I hope that, are there any questions or any follow-ups that you'd like for me to do in that response? I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Abraham will have the next question.
Good morning. Thanks for spending your Saturday with us.
Oh, it's my pleasure. Thank you.
Now, what do you consider as essential in the relationship between a city manager and the city council? How would you facilitate a productive relationship?
You know, I've worked with many councils. And I've learned that the first thing to do is to set goals. That is, that would be my number one goal for me, if I were to be selected to, for this position, is to sit down with the city council and develop a set of goals in terms of where would you like for me to direct the community? Communication, I think, is the most important thing between the manager and the city council. If you don't have that together, if you don't communicate with the city council, you will not be able to manage correctly. And for me, that is the key issue.
Thank you.
Councilman Baker will have the next question.
Thank you for being here. Good morning.
Thank you.
Obviously, you're here because we liked your resume, we liked what we heard, so we're happy to have you, all of the candidates today. But what would an internet search reveal about your past public positions? And is there any information or background that you'd like to provide?
Are you talking about good or bad?
Whatever you want to share.
Okay. Well, you know, I will say that for the most part, it will talk about all the various cities that I've worked in, in terms of, like I said, I've worked for over seven communities. I think that it will talk about some of the controversial issues that I've had to deal with in numerous communities. Have there been ups and downs in each of the cities that I've worked in? Yes, there have. All good managers deal with that. But I don't think you'll find many. I mean, there'll be instances where perhaps there may be an argument or disagreement with an employee, or perhaps even a disagreement with the city council. Now, I know that communication is important, but please know that as your city manager, I will be very honest and very direct with you. And there will be times when I will say, "Council, I respectfully disagree." And that is something that we'll have to develop in terms of a report, where we have to agree to disagree. And that's going to be key.
Thank you. Councilman Hamilton will have the next question.
Thank you, Jane, for joining us today.
Good morning.
What actions would you take to assure that Troy is intentionally engaged in evaluating and improving its diversity and inclusion efforts to ensure all residents have an opportunity to participate in our government?
Oh, my. You know, in many communities that I've worked in, one of the first things that we've done is a vision statement. And I believe the city of Troy has something sort of to that effect in going over your report. And by doing this visionary statement, that is how we can incorporate the desires or the needs, not just of the residents, but of the businesses as well, because that's going to be key. And that's something that I would encourage the city of Troy to either update your current plan or develop a new one, so that you can bring our residents and our businesses together and develop a vision for the city of Troy. The first time I ever had an opportunity to do that was when I started my career in the city of San Antonio. And we did a visionary statement called Target Ninety. And I was very young during that time, and we were just starting. And when you see today what San Antonio looks like, it is because of Target Ninety that we're there. And that was a time when the city of San Antonio, believe it or not, never heard of it, it was, our downtown was desolate, businesses were moving away. But thanks to the work of the mayor and the city manager and the employees, we were able to develop this vision statement. And that's where we are, that's how it got us to where we are today.
Councilman Henderson will have the next question.
Morning, Jane. Thank you for joining us. In a mature community like Troy with difficult open space primarily left to develop, what experience do you have in assessing development opportunities and challenges within a city? And what is your plan if selected as the next city manager?
I think in the cities that I've worked in currently, right now, with the exception of Pontiac, until very recently, most of the cities that I've worked in have been, as you've described, there's very little growth in terms of, we're not going to annex any more in any communities. So what I've done in the past is to work with the city council and develop an economic development plan, so that we can make sure that not only do we maintain the businesses that are currently here, but that we also look to seek to bring in new businesses, think about the future. And it just, one thought just quickly left me as I was saying that. When we had an issue in one of the cities that I've worked in to bring in new communities, one of the ways that we did was through promotion, advertising. We don't really advertise our communities very well. And that's something that's kind of new here in some of the cities that I've worked in. So we help to promote, not just to new businesses, but also to our existing businesses, to let them know that we want them to stay here, we want them to continue. The other thing that I've recently done, and this is working with the city of Pontiac, and I believe it's done here also in the city of Troy, where we are development-ready, so that when new businesses come into our city, they know that we are prepared, we know the areas that are available for them, and that's already determined. And when they come in, they know that their project will be completed on time, and that we're ready and willing in welcoming the new business to our city.
Councilwoman Horderick will have the next question.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What do you see as the city manager's role in communicating with the media and the public? How do you plan to be successful in that?
The media is very important to the community, and you must always have an open role with the press. One of the things that I do is to make sure that if I receive a call from the press, I return that call as soon as possible. If not within the hour or so, depending on what I'm doing, almost immediately. And I guess for me, I have a little bit of other personal experience in, as it relates to the press. My husband was, when we first met, was a reporter. And so he made sure that I understood how important that role was, to communicate, to let them know, and to be prepared. And I know many times, the reporter hates the statement, no comment, and I try my best not to go there. But I assure them that I want to make sure that they get the most accurate information, so that if they can wait for a bit, then that will be it. But the important thing with the press is to develop a relationship, have good communications. I know many of the reporters that I work with in my community, and I let them know. And many, many times, I will prepare press releases ahead of time to the press and provide them with photos or whatever, to help them better prepare their stories. And that's the other thing that I think, using our cable or communications department to assist us in making sure that we're ready for an issue. And the press release is key.
Councilman Pennington will have the next question.
Jane, it's nice to meet you.
Thank you, sir.
Please describe in detail your approach to municipal budgeting, including the process you would use to develop budget objectives with city council and facilitate budget development with department heads.
Well, as I said, I believe that budget is my forte. And there are so many ways in which a municipality can implement or develop a budget. And I'm not going to go down and give you the various types of lists or types of budgets that are out there. But I'm always looking for ways to make sure that we are accurate, that we are accountable, that we provide the information as quickly as possible to the city council. So the basic, the basic format for developing a budget is, obviously, we work with the city council first. We identify the various goals that they would like the city manager and the staff to take a look at. Obviously, I work very closely with the finance director to make sure that our funds are available, that they can be used as such, and then develop that. We set up budget hearings together with the city council, or obviously with our residents, to make sure that they can see they have an opportunity to provide citizen input. And then through there, there are many, many other administrative processes that are required for budget. Certain funds can only be spent a certain way, things of that nature. And from then, we would produce the budget. After that, however, one of the key things is to measure the accomplishment of that budget. And so you have key factors you identify, key indicators, are you meeting them? You work on a monthly basis. The directors will provide you monthly reports, so they can see what they're done. Also, the finance director will provide monthly, quarterly reports to see how we're doing. And if there's an issue, I'd like to address it quickly. I like that, too.
I thought I turned the volume on.
I was afraid that was going to happen to me, too. But the budget process, it's very similar in terms of how you put together. You obviously work with the departments in the development of it, you work with the city council, make sure that citizens know what's going on, giving them some input in terms of making sure that the budget is being done accordingly, work very closely with the finance director. And as I said, I hope I'm not repetitive, I just want to make sure that you see that there is a cycle. And I can tell you that that same cycle that I'm describing to you is the same one that's used in major cities. The one difference that, at least only until now, when I first started as a budget analyst, we would also have financial forecasts, and we would have 10- to 5-year financial forecasts. And if that's doable here, that is something that I would like to implement, and that's something that I would encourage. Take a look at the future, see what's happening, make sure that if there's any changes that are coming in, then we'll be able to address them quickly.
Thank you. Sorry about the interruption.
Oh, no, not at all.
Thank you. I'll ask the next question. I assume that you've taken a look at the city's organizational structure. How do you feel about the current structure? Do you feel there is a need to implement change? If so, express your ideas and tell us your philosophy on the city's organizational structure.
You know, I'll be very honest. I have looked at the organizational chart, but I will tell you that before I would initiate any change, I would first need to come in and learn the organization directly, before I make any changes. I would not walk in here and just start making changes or start being, as they say, the backseat driver or the backseat quarterback. That is not my style. So for me to sit here and tell you that I would come in and make some changes, the only changes that I would make would be only until after I had met with the department heads, with the city council, look at areas for improvement. And that's something that I would do continually, on a regular basis. If there's a better way for us to manage, to organize, that is the mechanism that I would follow.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Abraham.
Thank you. If selected as the next city manager, how would you build trust and respect of the employees and the community?
You know, that's actually the first thing that you do, any city manager, when you walk into a city. That is the first thing that's required. You must gain their trust, their confidence. That's very key, because if you want to be successful. So how do we do that? How have I done that in the past? Well, the first thing that I've always done is to measure myself, the needs, or understand the issues of the organization. Once I have a good grasp, then what I like to do is I sit down with the staff, and I ask them to tell me what are some of the things that they would like to see done, what are some of the areas that they would like to see improvements, and work together in making sure that that's done. And then lastly, implement them. I think one of the best ways to gain trust of the staff is to implement their ideas. Let them see that I am listening to what they're doing. As they ask me questions or they ask me for recommendations or advice, I'd like to implement their ideas. And I think that's the first way to gain their trust, to show that I do care, to show that I do listen, and that I'm willing to take their ideas and go with them.
Thank you. Councilman Baker?
Professionally and personally, how do you plan to be involved in the community?
Well, that's easy. You'll probably see me, you don't want to see me very often. So the best thing that I love, and you would think that in a city like Pontiac, I love when I walk downtown and people actually know who I am, and they will call me, oh, they'll, from the street across, "Hey, Deputy Mayor, how are you?" And I love that. So the way that I would get involved is by working closely with the chamber, obviously, with the various nonprofit organizations that the city has an affiliate agreement with or understanding. I will attend, obviously, neighborhood events. You will see me at all the events. I will walk probably into a business and introduce myself and let them know that I'm here, and if they need me, that I'm, you know, I'm available. So I have this walking theory by just introducing myself to people, attending meetings, attending functions. One of the things that we do in Pontiac, and this really helps me to meet the people in the council districts, is that we have seven different council districts. They each have community meetings, so I do my best to attend all of them, which is one of the reasons I'm probably exhausted. But I do my best to attend, and I listen to them, and even during the council meetings as well. They'll come, they'll ask me questions, having an open-door policy. And again, that's important. At the same time, even though I say I have an open-door policy, I know that there are priorities that I have to attend to, work that must be done. So I do set aside some time to make sure that I leave some time so that people can just, you know, come in and talk to me. So that's what I would do. I would be very involved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Hamilton?
Troy is proud of our longstanding fiscal stability. And while recognizing that policies set by the council, what assistance would you provide to maintain or improve the city's financial position? And what past experiences demonstrate your financial acumen? That, we already covered some of that.
I know, I know. Well, you know, it's important that, and I know most councils that I've worked in, and this is good, in that they trust the manager, they trust me, that maybe perhaps they won't be as closely reviewing the financial report. But I would like to have perhaps maybe initially some monthly or quarterly meetings with the city council, where we talk about key issues that are coming up. And if it's a financial issue that we need to address, then that is what we'll do. Now, again, in the current city that I work with, we have a finance committee. And so at that time, we sit down with the city council or the various council members, in this case, there's three, and we elaborate upcoming issues, upcoming projects that will have a financial impact on the city. So I think the best thing that I can make sure is, or at least inform the city council of anything that's happening financially, is through the monthly and quarterly reports, financial reports, those are key. Also, to give monthly or quarterly reports regarding the progress of our key indicators, how are we working, what are we doing, what is the progress? And then the council meetings themselves, I will give you reports in terms of what's happening in the community, what are some of the areas of concern. But more importantly, if there's ever a financial issue that's occurring in the state, I would like to at least warn you much early, to let you know that this is happening, and then we can develop ways to address that.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Being one of our pseudo neighbors in Pontiac.
Yes.
You understand Troy.
Yes.
And you've probably done some research trying to understand the city. What do you believe are the most important opportunities and challenges for the city in the near future?
Well, actually, Your Honor, I have worked with the city of Troy and other cities through Sakura. That I was the city manager for the city of Berkeley for many, many years, over 14 years. And so I'm very familiar, I know your staff, many of your staff members here, I've worked with them in different projects. And I think that's one of the key things that will help me here. I know Oakland County. I've developed excellent rapport with many of the key Oakland County officials. So for me, it will be, it won't be difficult, the change or the transfer, that's key. So I just wanted you to know that, okay? I'm not walking here new. I have family members that live here in Troy, they grew up in Troy, they went to the schools here in Troy, so Troy, it's not a stranger, even though I'm a native Texan. But I am familiar with Troy. So, and obviously, through the mayor's and manager's association, I work very closely, so I've met them and spoken with the mayor as well. So many different interactions between the communities here in southeastern Michigan, so that we can get to know each other. So having said that, okay, so what are some of the issues? I think, as I said earlier, I'm not here to tell you, you know, what are some of the key things without me actually being here first, okay? To truly understand that. I don't, I hesitate just a little. But, and having said that, I will tell you that like all cities, all cities, Troy will deal with issues that relate to, obviously, economic development. How are we going to maintain our businesses that are here? We'll also deal with neighborhoods, in terms of how are they growing, what are some of the needs of the citizens? We'll also have to deal with issues that relate to new technologies that are coming into the community. How are we going to better manage our cities? So as much as we all like to think that our cities are unique, in all of the cities that I've worked in, all the communities have, deal with same issues. How are we going to fix our roads? How are we going to keep our taxes low? How are we going to make sure that we keep our businesses together? How do we make sure that our children are well-educated, that they're safe? And that's another issue. We want to make sure that our communities are safe. So all of those factors, those are all issues that communities deal with. And so those, I believe, are some of the issues that we deal with. I know that as an administrator, as a manager, the key issue that I've dealt with in all the cities is, how are we going to make sure that we're able to fund our services efficiently and in a cost-effective manner? That's always a big issue. So those are some of the day-to-day routine things. But as far as some of the other items that perhaps you would like to see, I'd like to have this opportunity to sit down and find out and learn and find some solutions for the city of Troy. So I hope that answers.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Horderick?
What steps would you implement to assuring ethical culture in the city?
Well, I know the first thing, obviously, as the city manager is, you have to walk the walk, as they say. You must be able to do that. That's going to be key. But one of the things that has helped us to make sure that everybody is on the same page is through the development of, and they have been difficult, you would think that they would be easy, but the implementation of, how do I say this, ethics ordinances and things of that nature. This way, everybody understands what their role is, everybody understands they need to be accountable, they need to, you know, be more upfront with some of the issues that they're dealing with, even on a personal level as well. So that is how I would deal with ethics. Develop a good ethics plan, make sure that everybody signs the policy. And believe it or not, there are some instances where some individuals do not like an ethics ordinance, and I can understand, I can totally understand. And in those instances, we sit down, we work things out, and we find a way to make sure that we address their concerns.
Thank you. Councilman Pennington?
Jane, please describe a situation you've handled where the community faced a contentious issue with strong diverging opinions, and what did you learn from that experience?
Let's see, how many? Oh, my. That's our job as city manager. We deal with that all the time. But the most current one that I'm dealing with, and I'm dealing with right now, and it's probably one of the reasons I think I was sharing with somebody, I'm exhausted, is we're dealing with the issue of medical marijuana. And in the city of Pontiac, it is, I think it's equally divided 50/50, those that want it and those that don't. And together with, again, this is a strong form of government, but together with the mayor, the way we the mayor, the way we, we've been managing that, to make sure that both the residents and the businesses, both people that are interested in, in coming to our city and those that live in our city, we held a major town meeting. And we, we received their input to make sure that their concerns, that their desires were incorporated in the, in the ordinance that we, that we were planning. As a matter of fact, we just, just released it to, to the, to the planning commission, and they're looking at it. It has not been approved. It's still, it's still in its study, its study phases. So, in, in other words, and I hope I'm answering this question completely, because that's, that's key for me. Whenever we deal with a, with an issue, again, depending on whether it be of a personal matter or of a citywide matter, being open, being accountable, being willing to speak to, to the community, again, depending on the issue, is, is going to be vital. And in this case, the issue of medical marijuana, we were, we wanted, we want to be open, we want to assure the residents. And the way that we did it was by having this town meeting and receiving input. And that's, that's, that was not no easy task, especially since there were many individuals who were vehemently opposed to it.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you.
Jane, I have the, the last question.
Okay.
Okay. Our past city manager contracts have included a provision requiring the city manager to live within 20 miles of the city. If offered the position, would this type of provision be acceptable to you?
Yes, yes. The only thing that I would ask, I, I don't believe I'm too far away from that, but I would ask to give some time to, to be able to move if I have to, to just give me a little bit of time. But, but no, there would be no problem with that, Your Honor, just a, a time.
Very good. Thank you. So, this is an opportunity to ask questions, if you want to ask questions, or to give us a closing statement?
Well, you know, I do have a closing statement, but, but if you don't mind, if I, if I can ask a few questions.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I know that you've asked me, and I know this is probably a question that all the administrators or candidates will ask you, but what, what would, what would be the first item that you would like to see the city manager address? What's the first issue?
Well, maybe we could go around the, around the table. And for me, I think it would be, you know, to sit down with staff and learn the organization. And then, sit down with the city council and have a discussion, frank discussion with city council about issues in the future.
Thank you, sir.
I, I have a similar concern. I would say that the most pressing need for this community is, is Brooklyn. Whether it's city staff, whether it's the community, we've, we've been through quite a bit in the past six to eight months, and there is a breach in trust. So, I too see it as a understanding where, where the city has been, where staff has been, where the community has been, to, to put that into context as we look forward to growing and developing the city. So, those are my priorities.
Thank you.
I agree with both of them so far. I think that, you know, for me, that's a great question for me, I think it's a great question for the city employees as well. I think they're, they would like to be asked that question, because I think that would be key to how they would have a certain comfort level with the change and moving forward. And to build on some of that, I think the other, one of the major issues facing our community, aside from the trust and aside from all that, is green space development, how we're facing what we're going to do in this city over the next, really, generation in a sense. I mean, where, where do we go from here? Can we do anything? There's a good amount of population that believes that we're way overdeveloped and we need to slow that down and take any means necessary to do it. And there's also a, a large population that thinks, you know what? It's how you build the economy and how you have jobs, and, you know, trying to balance those two interests. I think if you look at some of the issues we've had, aside from our previous city manager, that's been the focus of our contentious debate here, the civic center development plans. Really, really any issue we've faced, I mean, cluster ordinance is a big issue for some people right now, and just those kind of important issues that every community faces. But Troy, I think, is because we're such a desirable place for people to come into, we build out much faster, or we, we, and we've got very creative and talented developers in our city and community who are doing everything they can to, to maximize what they want to do, which is great, that's how we have houses to live in and money in our conference here in the city. So, balancing those interests, I think, is always key.
Interesting.
See, as you, as you do. When we get to hear, you know, I'd say, no, I'd say, if you did them.
Basically, what they said, it's the rebuilding trust, the staff healing, the healing with the community, which I think dovetails into the conversations we have about green space. Without trust, how can you have, you know, these conversations? You know, foundational to this is, is the very real challenge of managing the city effectively. We are a militaged city with a triple A bond rating to protect, and that, that creates a challenge in the conversation of how we take on challenges in terms of funding our services, the ones that demand, that, that were demanded to deliver, you know, safety, DPW, and then the quality of life services as well. So, how you would look at that, and, and, and that's, I think, a challenge for any city manager coming in.
Yes, that's something that we do with all cities. Very good. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just to piggyback on that, I think what we really need is a, a whole new philosophy of how to engage our community. And I've, ways that don't just bring out the same group of people that always come to every town hall, that always come to every group, but just a new, modern way of doing this that involves technology, that involves social media, that involves things we can't even think of, something new and innovative, so that we reach every part of our community. I think part of rebuilding trust is that. And then, also, the long-term fiscal stability of our city. For every project, everything we evaluate, when we look at the budget, it's how do we maintain our city for the long term? And if a recession hits, are we ready? Without having to cut a third of our workforce like we had to 10 years ago, I'd like to always have a plan ready for that.
That's, that's something that all city managers deal with on a regular basis, you know, financial stability. I can tell you that because I've been through, and again, working with many cities where we've been, almost where we've had to cut more than just a, just a little from, from our communities, I've learned to, whenever we develop a new program, to make sure that it's sustaining, that it is self-sustaining, that if it is not self-sustaining, then it is not something that we, that we move forward on. We must find ways to make sure that it is self-sustaining.
Well, you've done your homework. You know the issues that we have faced the last year, year and a half. Obviously, public trust and, and trust in government is, is a healing issue for the new city manager. But, other than all these issues, I mean, affordable housing for seniors, I mean, that is, that's something that we talk about all the time, other than, you know, the, the, these are more important issues, but, you know, we look at that, many people that live in Troy, they want to stay in Troy because of the schools, because of the police force, because of all the amenities. But, you want, you know, like my situation, I want to move out of this big house, my kids are gone, I want to get rid of it, but I want to move somewhere where, you know, it's ranch and, and affordable. And we just, it's hard to find that in the city of Troy. So, that would be another issue that, you know, city manager would have to work with developers and make sure that was a part of, you know, their plan.
You know, one of the key things that, that will help me is that, being a member of the International City and County Managers Association and being an active member, I have access to city managers from all over the world. And we share ideas and concepts, and I know that if I, if I needed some assistance or some direction or, or discussion, that I could meet with some of my colleagues and they'd be more than willing to share some of their concepts for dealing with, with the issues that you're, that you're talking about, so.
What everybody said.
I don't think so.
Naturally.
Well, look at you, I don't think so.
Already getting pegged.
Oh, really?
Team building is, is hugely important, you know, especially in the context of ethics and trying to get people to get on your team and, and to buy into your, your processes and ideals, right? So, team building is paramount, and I, I think the city employees need that at this stage of the game, given what we've had to go through for the last two and a half years or better. So, that's, that's critical. Trust naturally is a, a big factor in that. And then, to piggyback off what Councilman Baker mentioned, is balancing the development, and mostly in the neighborhoods, I think, because I, I think we have a pretty good handle on that in the, in the business corridors. You know, of course, you know, we're getting restaurants that pop up everywhere, you know, it makes traffic kind of a complicated problem.
It's a good problem, that's a good problem.
It's a good problem to have. And, and we, you know, we live in a great city because of, you know, some of those problems. But, when we, with regard to the, to the neighborhoods, you know, we have generations of open space that have, you know, not been sold because families have sat on these pieces of property, and now, all of a sudden, you know, they're, they're getting a quarter of a million dollars to a million dollars for an acre of property, and developers are buying that and wanting to develop it. A, you can't blame the families for getting rid of the product at this point, but B, they're butted up to neighborhoods that have never had any kind of development in their backyard. So, you know, those are the kind of things that we grapple with right now. And our cluster ordinance is designed to try to, to assist and make buffers between those situations. But, it is a complicated problem that we have to struggle with, so.
Oh, no, and I, I understand. I know, for example, in the city of, of Berkeley, it's a very small community, but brought in a restaurant that was just amazing, and it changed the, the neighborhood in that area. So, more cars were starting to come into the neighborhoods and getting complaints, and so I, I understand that. Finding a way where the business and the residents can, can live together and live together and understand each other. And then, in, in Pontiac, we have the M1 concourse, and so, that's a major, major, sort of here cars racing around this course, and we get complaints, obviously, early in the morning, what are they doing racing at seven o'clock in the morning? So, yes, change, change is not easy. Change.
There's an opportunity to give us a closing statement?
Yes, yes. And first of all, thank, thank you, city council. Thank you for, for, you know, telling me what some of these issues are. And, and I'm pleased to say that, that I know this, this two shall pass, as they say, this two shall pass. I believe that if I'm given an opportunity, as I said, this is not the first time that I've applied. I am determined to, to be here as the new manager. But I don't come with empty hands. As I mentioned to you earlier, I have a very diverse background. I have worked with one of the largest communities to some of the smallest communities. I've worked in, with communities that have a small, a small budgets as three million to as big as a billion, almost, 700, oh my God, I can't even, even begin to count. I've worked in every single aspect of local government. IT is key now. As a matter of fact, I remember when I was first starting, we were one of the first to have a, a portable laptop computer, being one of the first to recommend to, to the city manager to have email. And I can remember the city manager saying, that's a fad, that's a fad. No, we need to try this. So, I know that, that I'm ready, and I know that I can help to motivate and gain back this trust that's lacking from, from our, our employees. As I mentioned, or at least in, in my letter to you all, I talk about team building, and that's really my management style. As a matter of fact, I can tell you, and I'm very proud of this, that one of, one of the, the key things that I, that I bring to you is being able to develop a good team. And I do that by making sure that I look at their, their strengths. As a matter of fact, one of the things that I, that I've taken with me, thanks to my work with, with ICMA, is there's a, there's this book called Know Your Strengths. And so, I like to give that to the employees so that they can figure out what their strengths are. You know, many times, we seem to, we say, well, you know, I've got all these weaknesses and I'm going to make them better. Well, this, this, the theory behind that, the philosophy behind that is to, why are you wasting your time on trying to fix your weaknesses? Let's work on the strengths. So, by identifying what those strengths are, then I can build a team, develop a team, work together. You have an incredible staff. I've, like I said, I've met many of them, I know them, I, I've worked with them, I, I believe that I, that I can relate and, and help gain, gain that. But, again, the city of Troy, your reputation far exceeds you, so please, I know that this is a little bump in the road, as they say. When I, when I sit back and look at this, with all due respect, this is very, not to say that it's any better or any less, but the city of Pontiac, for example, the issues that we've dealt with, the things that we've done there. We've undergone major, major changes. Actually, I'm very, very proud to tell you that I helped to, to bring the city out of receivership. As a matter of fact, that was one of the reasons that I was appointed through the state receivership board to hire a professional city manager. And my first year working with the city of Pontiac, we made incredible, incredible strides, and here we are. Our budget is, is, is overfunded, we have over 14 million dollars in our fund balance. I'm pleased to say that during my first year that I was there, we received a budget award, which I see you have many, but for us, it was the first time, the very first time. We also received a, a comprehensive annual financial award as well, for the first time. So, again, I'd like to, to, to say that I'm, that I influenced that and to make sure that that was done, so that, that's key. I'm going to leave you with a little something before, before I go, because I, I can't tell you how much I would like to have this opportunity. As I've said to you, I am ready, I have the experience that I believe will help take you to where you'd like to go, I have the education. But I've put together a little packet, and if you don't mind, maybe perhaps I'll, I'll leave it to the, this is for GovUHR, but I, I need one for everybody, including the city clerk and the, and the city attorney. Now, in this package, there are some reports that I'd like for you to see, some that I've written and some that I've administered. And the first one is a report from, and this is the first project that I had to work with the city of Pontiac, and it's the Congress for New Urbanism. And it was a grant that I applied for and was able to receive. It was not a, a big grant, it was a $15,000 grant. But, from that $15,000 grant came one of the most incredible plans to help us develop our downtown. And we're trying to make our downtown more transit-friendly, and, and I wanted to show that report to you so that you can see. It was prepared by the same, the same group that developed the city of Birmingham, and when you read it, you'll recognize many of the names, Bob Gibbs to be one, for example. So, I wanted to show that, that this is something that I worked from the beginning to the end with the developers. And it is a, is a plan that we give to anyone who is looking to make improvements or develop our downtown. So, that's key. The other thing that I wanted to share with you is the, the, the budget message, the first budget message that the mayor ever had to do for the first time ever for this, for this city of Pontiac. Well, I say the first time ever, the first time being out of receivership, they were in receivership for more, not quite 10 years, but almost 10 years. So, having no control of, of a local government. I included a copy of the organizational chart there as well so that you can see how we manage the city as well, that's going to be key. To go from a city where we used to have more than 400 employees to today, and I, when I first started a couple of years ago, three years ago, we had a little over 30 employees, most of our services are contracted. Today, we have more than, more than 200 employees that we're slowly bringing back some of the services to, to the city of Pontiac. So, that's tremendous. I wanted you to take a look at the, at the budget message that we put together. Now, I did not do it all by myself. It is something that was done together as a team with a finance department, with our directors, and, and obviously with the mayor. Our mayor is very hands-on, she, she's more of a workaholic than I am. I'm very proud to work with Mayor Waterman. And then, the last thing that I wanted to, to show you was the neighborhood empowerment projects. This is something that's part of our Moving Pontiac Forward Economic Development Plan. And one of the key factors of that plan is to receive input from residents. Now, you get economic development from businesses and, you know, people of interest that want to develop, but we wanted to know from our residents. What do you think will make your neighborhood better? neighborhood better? And so the city sets aside about $200,000 each year, and we do these small grants, and we work with nonprofits and local residents, and they get an opportunity to develop some projects they'd like to see. And in our city, because it's been 10 years since we've done a lot, we've done major improvements to our parks that the citizens would like to see. We have more than 30 parks in the city of Pontiac. So we've got a lot of work there. We've also done some improvements to our lights, we've even done some improvements to some of our cemeteries. So again, these are ideas and concepts that our residents have come to us, and that's key, and they're part of the economic team. So I wanted to showcase and at least show you some of the work that I've done, okay? Again, city council, thank you very much for this opportunity. I hope to be given an opportunity to be your city manager. I'm ready, I can do this. Thank you for this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane, good to see you again.
Thank you, good to see you too, sir. Thank you. And thank you to the residents and people who are here, and to the staff. You know, it shows that you're very civic-minded there very much. So anyways, it's Saturday morning. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a quick break and come back a little before 11:00.